All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Virtual meeting only in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we have a call to order at seven oh two. Now announcements, meeting of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable. Television access channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and or phone number may be recorded. So first item up is the approval of the seventeen September thirteenth open session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Stone Eye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
There you go, three nothing. All right. So Margaret, when you're ready to unmute, next up is correspondence.
Correspondence, okay. Um, well, there are a couple of things. First of all, I want to mention that Susan Henry. Is the Chair of the Berlin Boylston Regional School District School Committee now. And she contacted me last week and I have, I think I've I've notified Peg or the entire board. That she is instituting visits by the school committee to our select board, which will start in November. So there'll be periodic visits. To provide updates and things and facilitate the lines of communication between the town and school. So I am all for town gown relations and this was really good news. So. That was, that was nice to talk with her about that. So um, we received other correspondents. We received three emails with concerns regarding. The concerts at nineteen Carter. So this unfortunately is a continuing issue. That I would like to mention, you know, a possible resolution to the board in my TA report tonight, very briefly, but we received three emails. On the continuing concerts. At nineteen Carter, these emails were from the neighbors who have had concerns about. A piece and enjoyment on their own properties and being able to. Being allowed that peace and enjoyment on their properties. So. We also received a, an email from a resident at Berlin Woods, representing the Berlin Woods Association. Regarding a remote controlled airplane that has been flying over their property. I know Chief Galvin has been notified of this and he's going to be doing his department update tonight. So I think that he would be able to address this somewhat. My hope is that we know who is operating. This remote controlled airplane so that we and the residents at Berlin Woods can communicate with the individual to first ask them. To, you know, respect, respect their airspace. So they are not disturbed by this, but. I don't have that information yet and hopefully. The chief has gotten, gotten a little bit of information on this. And I know Mr. Karkman. Is also here regarding his correspondence. So I'm sure he'll be interested to hear about next steps. And that's it.
Alrighty, so we do have a few folks in the audience that know if there were any, excuse me, general public comments. That we could talk to, if so, give a raise of the hand. All right, oh, here we go. So Mr. Karkman, Mary, if you could push him to the front. All right, Mr. Kirkman, I think the floor is yours. Oh, need one mute?
I was. Hello, Sec, Select Board. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I wonder if it may be best to wait until Chief Galvin arrives. He and I have had just a brief correspondence. In emails and I want to thank this Lake Board, particularly Mary Arada and others who've done a fantastic job responding. With an all encompassing and welcoming manner to the complaint that we collectively here at Berlin Woods thirty-two units. In its entirety have logged in regards to the noise pollution that we've experienced for a number of years. With this gas powered, remote control plane. So do you believe that it's best that we wait until Chief Galvin is here?
He is here and we can bring him on up. Mary, if you want to bring him on up, then we can just start his. General Department update and ask him to go first on that and then have you ask any questions and then we'll just continue.
Okay, and before we bring him up, I wonder if it's best, I think that that my letter was circulated. So it is really no need for me to. Read verbatim off of the letter. It's probably about a minute and a half in its entirety. But just for the sake of brevity and succinctness, essentially what's happening is we get these planes that come over. It's a single plane. It's been here for, I don't know, two, three years, probably has a four foot wingspan. It's gas powered. And the ambient issue of of noise is such that it is about eight times above the normal ambient sound. In the backyard, excuse me. And so. As such, the the mass state has an overarching. Law or regulation rather that provides that if it's more than twice as loud as ambient noise, it is considered. Breaking the law. And again, this plane can reach. Sounds that are up to eight times as loud, particularly when it does a dive bomb. So I think that that's sufficient. I do have a recording of it and I'll turn the floor over to the chief at this point.
You go chief.
So I guess we can start with noise. So one thing and great, thank you. I appreciate your returning my email. In terms of police enforcement on it, it's very, very difficult. You know, there's been some things that have gone back and forth on the emails about the FAA and things that are involved there and also the DEPC MR on on noise. So that DEPC MR and we've actually had some discussions in town with the Board of Health about utilization of this CMR for some other noise related issues. You know, even at the state level, this is something that's very infrequently used, maybe once or twice a year by by. DEP, so it's a, it's a, or DPH, I'm sorry. It's a, so it's a very difficult road to go. It would take. You know, the spearheaded by the Board of Health to to look in this, to investigate it, to measure the sound and determine if there's, there's another way to go. You know, I think, you know, we could probably have a better way to try and handle this. And one of the things I'd asked and Mr. Carman isn't, isn't aware yet of where the, where it's originating from. I think that's what we need to try and find out because some of this may be solved with a simple conversation. You know, that someone who's out there recreating doesn't understand necessarily. What that's causing to other people. You know, these are generally hobbyists that are out there with planes. And so I think, you know, we can probably, if we can determine where it's coming from. And that would be, we'd need probably some assistance from the neighbors and, you know, police response or, you know, a combination of our response to just try and find where it is. I'm guessing based on some of the space that's required to to take off and land some of these planes. It may be at. At the the church in Hudson on on River Road. There's a, there's a ball field on Dudley on our end of, or on Dudley and Hudson and and they have a larger space behind the church. Just, just looking quickly, I can't find anywhere else where I would think it would be taking off from. So we may be able to locate this and start a conversation. Because it may be as simple as just flying in a different direction. There's some industrial buildings in that area that if they're flying over that on a weekend, it's less likely to to impact residences. And and try and move forward from there. You know, we can start the discussion with the Board of Health and see if that's a direction that. They may be willing to go, but I'm not sure if that would be the best, best course of action at this point.
If I could just interject, I just want to note that Bill Brookings, the agent, the Nishoba Associated Board of Health Agent did ask. If we were aware of who owns the plane and he asked a few questions. So he is interested in the matter and I think. This, we need to find out where the plane's coming from, who owns it. So I, I agree with chief. We need to have a conversation with them first to see if they will comply. I think that is a very reasonable first step.
You know, there's a, a long time resident neighbor of our building right here who is very involved in the remote control plane. Hobby within the Commonwealth, actually countrywide. So I'm going to reach out to him. Usually I see him a couple of times a week in his driveway. And just to try and find out if he's aware of anyone else in the area that's utilizing them. There is a pretty significant club in Westboro. So through his context there, he may be able to help us identify who's, who's flying it. So.
Any other questions we can answer for you, Mr. Kirkman tonight?
Thank you for the invitation, Peg. No, I thi- I think chief has done a fine job of encapsulating and putting forth next steps. To get this resolved. I think the principal issue is is not so much when the plane is moving along. It's the dive bombs. I mean, my father visited this afternoon and he was out again. Today typically is just out there for Saturday, but he'll run that, he or she will run that plane for up to two hours at a time. And the dive bombs are just outrageously loud. So maybe if he curtails the, the nature in which he's using the plane. Perhaps that would would be, you know, a possible solution. So that's it for now. I want to thank everybody's time. For for this and yield.
Awesome. Let us know if there's anything else we can do. Happy to help.
Thank you again.
You betcha. All right, Tom, did you, um, did you put in a report tonight or is it just me and I can't find it?
For me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Sergeant Schartner actually presented the report, not at your last meeting, but the meeting before. So that's how I was going to ask if you wanted me to go through the complete report. Or if just, there's actually a couple of things that have come up just in the past week that I could touch on.
I'd probably just do the highlights if.
Okay.
I didn't see the report either in the.
Gotten it a couple of weeks ago.
This, so this, the August, the August report would have been due, which is the one that Eric Schartner covered. So. That's why the chief doesn't have a report. The August report was submitted with, okay, so just to clarify.
All right, thanks.
So just one thing that we've been talking a lot about, and I've said there's a lot of unknowns is police reform. So just in the last week and a half, we've had two pretty big meetings statewide on the effects on our part-time police officers. So I had mentioned in a couple of reports months ago that that they've been talking about. Additional training and how many hours of training that would be that our part-time officers are going to be required to complete. So two weeks ago, two Wednesdays ago, they came out with a. The guidelines for what they're calling is the Bridge Academy. So that's a two hundred hour. Police academy that all of our part-time offices will have to complete in addition to all the training they've all already done. Yeah, and the annual training they have to continue to do. So they've divided that up into three different groups alphabetically. So the first group is A through H. So that means we have four of our part-time police officers that will have to complete that training before July first of twenty twenty-two. So that training will consist of two hundred hours. Yeah, one hundred and twenty will be in person. Police academy time and eighty hours will be online time that they complete here. What's different between this and some of the other online trainings you've been doing is that there actually will be testing that they have to do. So there will be testing centers set up. So as they complete the online training, they'll be sent to to testing centers. So the trainings rate, the whole premise behind it is great. The problem now is we have eight hundred hours of additional training that we have to send our officers to that we have not budgeted for. So. Margaret and I have spoken about the potential, at least this first year of I, of using some ARPA funding to cover that. In addition to the training, one of the required courses is firearms. And so there'll be. Supplies that will need to be purchased and quite a bit of ammunition for each person. Fortunately, one of the first four is a, is a statewide firearms instructor. So he'll. Hopefully be exempted from the live fire portion of that, that training. So that should reduce some of our, our liability this year. But with all four officers going, if they would all have to complete the eight hundred hours, we're looking at close to twenty-two thousand dollars. As well as four to five thousand dollars in additional. Ammunition purchases that weren't, that weren't planned for. So it creates a little bit of a dilemma. One of the things I talked to Margaret about is if if the ARPA funding is not available. You know, would it be something that now we need to consider adding as an article for our special town meeting? And I guess I kind of. You know, look to the board for guidance on that. If we want to look, just use the ARPA funding or if you would like a article prepared for. For the November special meeting.
Where do we stand with reserve fund transfers?
Well, with reserve fund transfers, we stand at zero so far, zero.
And there's ninety thousand in that fund?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five?
I just, I just want to express my significant concerns, not with police reform itself. And the fact that police officers will be well trained. But the fact that this is a significant, a significant unfunded mandate and chief and I have had this correspondent, this, this communication too. You know, I, I, I'm sure that the State Auditor's Office is receiving a lot of communication from cities and towns and I would not be opposed to drafting a letter from this board. Expressing the town's concerns with this unfunded mandate. This is just, this is classic and it's, and it's also extremely significant. You know, there are small unfunded mandates that we are asked to pick up. You know, costs for this one is significant and ongoing and the legislature in considering. Police reform should have made. Should have made accommodations for funding this or at least partly funding it. I'm sorry, that was just a little vent and it's very, very aggravating. Unfunded mandates in general are very aggravating to me, but this one is, this one is a big one.
And so it's twenty-seven thousand dollars just in this year for the first round of part times. What is the total once we train? All of the officers here at Berlin?
We have ten part-time officers, nine of them will, will require the training. So we're looking at fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars just to give you a rough estimate. You know, we're also looking at, you know. Rates for the part-time rates and, you know, for their hourly rate will be higher over the next couple of years as well. So that will add a little bit.
Well, and that, what are we going to do for staffing while they're in the training? Because it's not only paying their time to be in the training, it's sometimes we replace them with people who are higher like overtime, which will be higher than that.
Yes, that's one of the.
Is it safe to say worth looking near a hundred thousand dollars the state is asking us to spend on this training?
Potentially.
Reversing none of us?
Because if, if those eight hundred hours are eight hundred hours that they can't work for us in a police cruiser. It'll be significantly more than a hundred thousand dollars because it's more than double. You know, the average cost of a full-time or an overtime versus a part-time rate is, is more than double.
If any of the, we're also looking at a retention issue, you know, a recruitment retention issue because if, for any reason, part-time officers, any part-time officers cannot meet the training requirements. Then they can't be retained under police reform. So we may be losing part-time officers in addition to all of this.
So a couple of issues with that with retention. So we could lose them because they, they don't complete the training or they choose not to complete the training. Or once they're trained and then there's a twenty-four hundred hour work requirement. So if they've worked a minimum of five years and twenty-four hundred hours. The town could then apply for them to have a, a full-time standard. So they could actually not, if we wanted to hire them full-time, they wouldn't have to go to police academy. But what could happen is, is now they have that in their back pocket, they could get hired by another community. The other community could then say petition the state to say that they're a full-time academy trained. So basically, most of our part-timers are, or actually all should meet that standard. That they could potentially go work full-time somewhere else. And that's going to happen statewide to almost every municipality that has part-time police officers.
Right. And so could you explain then sort of the practicality then of hiring more full-time officers and fewer part-time officers?
Well, so I, I think as, as we move forward, that's going to have to happen. Reason being is so there's no, no longer a part-time level of training. So that for an officer even to work part-time, they would have to go to the full-time police academy. So that, that would mean them taking six months out of their life, no work to be able to go get trained and then potentially work part-time. So that's going to. Really eliminate that pool of candidates to hire part-timers. So we're going to have to look at and kind of do a cost benefit analysis to look at. How many offices we need to reasonably cover the shifts. One of the things that we don't want to do is burn all the officers out. But also that if you have a few more, you can sometimes run an officer short and not have to backfill time off with, with overtime. So there's going to have to be an analysis done. Fortunately, you know, everything's not going to be completely done with the change in part-timers until. Twenty twenty-six so that we, you know, we have some time, but as you know, the next, the next year and you know, next year and a half. Some substantial planning will need to be done to what the future makeup of the police department is going to look like.
Isn't this sort of the police version of what happened to us in the fire department where the fire decided that on-call people needed to have the same level of training as, as part-time and full-time fire officers? So if. On-call went and got all the training, they might as well just get hired somewhere. So I thought that also.
There was some similarity to that, but some of what happened with our fire department was, you know, our inability to get the, the on-call people to respond during certain hours of the day because. They couldn't just drop everything at their job and show up to for a call. So a little bit different, but there are some similarities.
Can I just ask how likely it would be for ARPA to pick up any part of this? Is it a definite or no?
It's a really, really good question. I think that there is a good possibility that lost. Revenues, which I've talked about in my TA reports over the last few weeks, those lost revenues, they are considered general revenues. There's a good possibility that those could pick up the cost, but it's really important to keep in mind that this is a finite funding source. This is one time. So it's not, it's not going to be something that can carry the town. It might help this year, but it's not going to be something that can carry the town in future years.
So Margaret, are you looking for a vote by the board or just like a go-ahead for either you or Mary to draft a letter to send to?
Um, I would, yes, I, I would, if, if the board would like a letter sent to the state auditor, I'd also like it sent to our legislators. I think that's, that's, you know, imperative that we, that we do that. In fact, it might be time to invite our legislators to a, you know, an annual update meeting. But anyway, chief, are you, are you wanting to add?
I'm just gonna say, could you give me a week before you vote to, to send a letter? Sergeant Schartner and I are going to another statewide meeting on, on Thursday. So my hope is that we'll have some more answers there and I can ask some more questions about funding because at, at, at these meetings, we have. Broke the subject of funding and they know it's a concern and there was talk of, of a supplemental budget with some supplemental funding. I haven't seen that gain any traction. But, you know, let me ask those questions this week and then if, if at that point you think it's necessary to draft a letter, I would say that might be a good idea.
Chief, are you aware of anything coming out of the Chiefs Association regarding a letter on unfunded mandates or no?
I don't know. So that's where I, it's a statewide chiefs meeting that.
Okay.
And on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
So that's really the big point. The other thing I just wanted to touch on is this morning, we've had another, what appears to be overdose death here in town. So I just want to highlight what, what we keep dealing with, what we've seen unfortunately as. As issues that have, I think, been exacerbated through COVID and through what people have been through over the last two years. That, that it's still out there. It's still severely affecting our community. You know, this, this affected, you know, family with, with children and it was really a sad. Sad day to have to go through this and work through this with a family. It's just, it's, it's terrible that we continue to see the effects of this epidemic that's been going on. Much longer than what we've been experiencing with COVID and it just continues to be a problem. In here in Berlin and in the entire Commonwealth.
There any questions? I know we're running a little bit behind for the hearing at seven twenty. Chris Scott, anything for chief?
I'm good for now.
All right, all right, awesome. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Meg, just quick, I know that you were interested in getting that article in the, the item. You know, Jan was busy and she did indicate that it's something she does want to cover. So I will, I have to send her something tomorrow. So I'll reach back out.
Just to keep the Berlin peeps in the know. That's, you know, just goodness. Awesome. All right, thank you, chief. All right, stay safe. Seven twenty, can we bring up all the assessors to the front, please? So this is a continuation, tax classification hearing continuation from seven twenty.
No, nine, nine.
Nine, seven. I was close. I got some numbers. I had a seven, I had two and they might were in the wrong order, but you know.
I just want to say that's a, that's a great photo of Bev.
It is. And Bev, all I'm going to say is thank you. All right, Mr. Pond, well, there's the top of Mr. Pond's head. There he is. Hello, neighbor. Neva, all right, Molly.
So I, I sent, I finally got all my values. Correctly sent to me and, and done up. So it just changed a little bit, but I wanted to point out a couple of. Typos. Well, I actually think it's a cut and paste thing, but on the year twenty twenty-one, the commercial rate was twenty ninety-five. And in twenty twenty, it was twenty-seven eighty-four. And in twenty.
Molly, I think it was twenty-five ninety-five in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, what did I?
It's okay. It's twenty-five ninety-five. I know that's what you, I know that's what you meant.
I'm not, I don't know what happened, but they got my, my things got messed up. So the, the top part, the important parts, right? So.
What, what, what was that of the year twenty twenty or twenty nineteen is wrong? So both lists is twenty-five eighty-three?
Actually, twenty-one, twenty, 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 nineteen and twenty eighteen, the commercial rates are. Wrong.
So can anybody share those documents just so either for the folks in the audience or so for all of us, we can all follow along?
I don't know if I can.
I, if it's the. FY twenty-two tax bill TA showing splits, that's the document we want to share?
Allocation of tech.
That's the one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not sure what happened when I was squishing it. It didn't change that much from. Last time, I think it was, it changed by pennies. In the residential rates. But, but they're your options and.
So in. In FY twenty-one. We did, the board voted a forty-five. Is that right? A forty-five percent shift? Molly? Okay, so that is correct, forty-five percent shift. And that was based on equity. In the tax rates between the residential and commercial. So the equivalent for FY twenty-two. As, as a matter of, of equity and stabilizing the tax rate would be a forty-nine percent shift, which would. Result in a residential tax rate that would be about equivalent to the FY twenty-one rate. And it would bump up the commercial tax rate to twenty-seven oh seven, so just over a dollar increase in the commercial tax rate. However, the values on the commercial are lower, is that right? Have, they've been, they've decreased by about ten percent.
Yes.
Okay.
And the values, and the values of residential has increased by how much?
Around five percent.
Okay.
My, my recommendation, you know, in terms of, of, you know, stabilizing the tax rate for residential properties. And assuming that the, even with the increase in the commercial tax rate, because of the reduced values, there, what is it? It's a. Forty-nine percent, four point five eight percent. Uh, increase in the tax bills. Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's, i- it's a lot, but if you, yeah, if you, i- if you went down to forty, the forty eight percent shift, um, you're increasing, but you know, and you're increasing the residential tax burden. So there's no perfect scenario here, but I think the forty nine um, split is, is the most equitable in the, for, for FY twenty two.
But the, the lower value of, of commercial is a, a reflection on uh, the value of their property, if that's exactly, but that means that our, our commer- our business is not as strong, but they're gonna get the same, if not higher tax bills. We're saying we do a forty nine. And a forty eight percent shift really only increases the residential taxes a tiny bit, even though their houses have gotten up. And I mean, I, I worry that, that, that as the commercial keeps going down, their ability to carry this is going to get uh, uh, harder to do. And what we're doing today is we'll lower their rate today and prepare for a large increase in the future because we won't be able to rely as heavily on commercial properties anymore.
You make a very, you make a very valid point, uh, because the commercial, I, clearly the commercial um, has, has struggled and has lost value. And so um, y- you don't wanna disproportionately burden them either. But I, I can't, you know, a forty eight percent um, might be possible if the board feels that um, you know, the residential tax base can support the, the modest um, increase.
But I, I wanna think positive. Maybe in the next year, things will improve.
That's the way to think.
I like the forty nine percent shift, actually.
So a, a lower, so with forty nine is lower to the people, uh, residential, but higher to commercial. Where on the forty eight percent, it's a little marginal increase to residential and a lower increased to commercial, correct?
But the values, the values of residential have gone up higher than commercial.
Yeah, they have.
And they're still, I mean, properties are still selling for
Yeah.
above assessed value. So this happens, I, I've seen this happen in a lot of towns with um, that don't have a huge commercial base. Have this problem of it shifting back onto residential or staying even. Because when you do the shift, that happens.
And again, no allocation is the same tax rate across all property types. And so the shift is how much more money are we putting on businesses and taking away from residences?
Right, but if you did the single tax rate, the no allocation, you're shifting what you shifted before back onto residential.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm not a- advocating for no allocation. I'm just, uh, again, I, I keep hearing from people in town about how much they don't think the businesses are uh, the business, the malls we've added contribute much to town. And pointing out that without them, the tax rate would be eighteen oh six, and we're debating between fifteen fifty seven and fifteen sixty two for the most part. So really, it's a significant uh, contribution to the town, no matter which one of those two numbers we end up going with.
Correct.
So is the board ready to uh, I mean, I can see all of us like moving things around and looking things and I'm doing math on the side. Is the board ready to make a recommendation?
It, there are four things we have to vote on, correct, Molly?
Yes.
And the first one, if we vote on this, would it be the um, the forty nine percent shift?
Yes.
Okay, I would make that motion.
I, I will second it.
Alright, let's put it to a vote. Um, I'm gonna say stone no.
I'm sorry, I, I don't. So I haven't heard from Peg why you're voting no.
I haven't either.
The reason why I'm voting no is that um, I know that there is a battle in town between the residents and the commercial and um, to me, Scott, as you were saying, it's a five cent difference between the forty nine and forty eight, but if you go over and you look at the difference in forty nine and forty eight for commercial, is it seventy? Yeah, quick do math, sixty cents. I don't know. To me, it, it just makes more sense to, to try and give a break to the um, commercial rather than um, the residence.
Well, their values went down though, Peg.
They did, they did, and I understand that.
But may not be as big an increase as, you know, dollar wise as, a- as we might think.
I know, but you know what? Unfortunately, none of us have those figures, so I don't know. Um, but that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying no.
The chair, Molly, did you have a comment?
I have a, did you say forty nine percent or forty eight percent, Chris? I'm sorry.
I said forty nine percent. I was going with Margaret's recommendation and I think it makes the best sense.
But the average tax bill, I mean, the average assessment is four sixty. So I, their taxes would be going up on average two hundred and sixty dollars.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
I just, that, I'm not trying to sway the board in any, by any stretch of the imagination. I just want to note that um, we do have residents who have also um, uh, you know, felt an impact uh, through COVID, who have lost jobs, who have struggled um, through this as well. So just, just wanna note that.
I mean, it's, it's, um, I think it impacts everybody in this town. I don't think anyone is unscathed from whichever way the tax bill goes, whether you own commercial or whether, yeah, you know, you're in, you're in your own residence. So it's unfortunately, it's a pain across the board with that. Molly, I know in the past you've shared and maybe it's coming up later, how do we sit with neighboring towns?
Well, all our neighboring towns are quarterly billing, so I would have to, I can only give you last year's tax rate, and I don't know if that would show um, the effects of the pandemic.
Okay, alright. No, I was just curious if you, if you had those, because I know in the past or it's easy to look up, you know, that Berlin's at making it up fifteen percent, Clinton's at making it up eighteen percent, Boylston making it up is at fourteen percent. So I'm just curious of the, the.
I think we were one of the lowest ones last year, were we not?
I know a couple of years ago we were. I think we were like fifteenth in the state or something like that. It was low.
The um, the commercial tax rate, I think we were lower than um,
Like far lower than Hudson, far lower than Hudson.
Yes.
Yes, and I think it was I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me.
No worries. I just didn't know off the top of your head, that's all. Cause I, I know that that's one question that often comes up with, well, how do we compare to neighboring towns? Unfortunately, it's not apples to apples. You know, we don't have a lot of services, you know, the taxes payable. We don't have trash pickup. We don't have um, town water, we don't have town sewer, so it's kinda hard to say where at X, you're at Y. They're equal, not equal because. Hope Scott, if you're talking, you're breaking up big time. You, you sound like uh, Charlie Brown's teacher. You gonna plug your headphones? There he goes.
It's fine, keep going.
Hey, there you are. No, what were you, um, what were you saying that we?
I just, we also don't get a lot of state aid because unlike surrounding towns, we actually are in theory wealthier than many of our surrounding towns. And so we don't get state aid to offset things as much as other towns do as well. If we're, if we're still, but I, I, I believe I'm torn, but I believe I'll vote I for forty nine percent shift.
Chris?
Uh, Keith, I.
Alright, two to one on the forty nine percent. Alright, next up.
The small commercial exemption, um, you usually do a ten percent. There's twenty eight people who would qualify for that. And that gets shifted within the commercial, the CPI value. So it doesn't raise anything for the residential, it just gets shifted around in the commercial.
Higher, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, so the motion would be to um, do the ten percent? Correct. So, okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, uh, any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, uh, stone I?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
There you go, Molly, you got two down.
Okay, and
We have the open space discount to the residential exception left.
The resident, yeah, residential exemption doesn't seem it would, it wouldn't do well for here. I looked, I did do a little research. There are there are eight cities that do this. And they have, I, um, they have like between a hundred, uh, a hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fourteen apartment parcels that they can split this on. We only have eight apartment parcels. So um, it doesn't really make sense. And then the other six are all Cape communities that have a big influx of, you know, summer, summer people. So.
Do we, do we need a motion or do we not making a motion just allows it to go on? We want a motion not to have a residence, uh, exen- a residence? So I will move that we do not have a residential exception in this year.
Second.
Alright, any other further discussion? Alright, stone I.
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
There you go. One more to go, Molly.
What's the last one?
The open space discount?
Oh yeah, you wanted not do that because um, you already accepted a state law that allows the commercial, uh, not commercial, chapter land parcels to be taxed under the residential rate opposed to the commercial rate.
So again, you're, you're, you're saying we don't need to do that, therefore we should vote against this.
Correct.
Or we get to. So I will, I will move that we do not have an open space discount for the reasons Molly has outlined.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? I don't see nothing. Stone I?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
There you go, Miss Molly. And Mr. Bradley and Mr. Pond and Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes, thank you all for your work.
Thank you, moving on in the tax rate setting process.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night, well. Alright. Alright, so, uh, so it looks like you are the only one from Personnel. Uh, so my, Mary, if you wanna bring on up Miss Cherian, we can get to our seven thirty meeting of the joint meeting with Personnel to the TA regarding staffing needs. Welcome, Mrs. Cherian. Right, Margaret, you are on mute.
Okay, so I think it's probably best that I just read um, just a portion of my recommendation. Um, uh, and start by saying, you know, the town has taken many, many measures um, to address um, the continuing uh, growth in, in Berlin. Um, but not just due to COVID, but over time, it's becoming more and more evident that we face um, staffing capacity issues um, on many fronts. We, you know, we can continue to endeavor and we will continue to endeavor um, to you know, to create efficiencies, to create work efficiencies and cost efficiency measures and, and things like that. But in the end, we are a people business. We're a people business. We are ground level working face to face um, uh, with residents and we have many volunteer boards and committees um, that are also doing work uh, for the, for the residents um, of this town. So I just, I, I, I wanted to at least begin the discussion about staffing needs. I had provided a recommendation back on September third um, that this conversation take place. And to begin to think about moving forward with some of the most vital uh, staffing needs. Uh, one of the things that, you know, I learned in the not too distant past, and I think a lot of us have learned, is that um, staffing at our highway de- department despite um, an increasing number of facilities, increasing road miles, increasing population um, a- and increasing duties, um, the staffing level has remained stagnant for twenty years, twenty years. It has not changed, for at least twenty years. We know that in two thousand two, um, the budget report indicated that there were five personnel at highway and an ideally staffed highway department today, we'd still have five. Um, so s- we need to address this and I'd like to, you know, I wanted to try to uh, begin this conversation um, to see how we move forward um, in addressing some of our highest priority staffing needs.
Um, just a quick question. I see that Kevin is still on. Claire, is that you? If so, can you raise your hand and if so, we'll bring you up to the front? There it is. We can bring up Mrs. Pond. Alright.
So while, while Claire is coming up, just one more, just one more thing. I, I think we need to look at long term, here's Claire, we need to look at long term strategies um, for this and we need to look at long term needs for this. Now, we know, and I'll go over in my TA report, again, the multiple vacancies that we have right now and the efforts that we're making to fill those vacancies. But um, we really need to, just as the town needs to take measures to sustain its growth, we need to take measures to reasonably sustain staffing capacity to meet the growth, the, the needs that come with growth. So um, anyway, that's my intro.
So Margaret, it's, it's quite an extensive list and truly, um, it hits probably just about every committee slash commission in town. Are you looking for all of us tonight to give opinions on what we think need to go?
Well, I think.
Priority or?
I think, I, I don't know that you need to rank them. I think that we do need to mention some notable needs, just as I, I did with the highway department. Um, you know, um, the highway department is one of our largest departments and most heavily funded municipal departments. It's one of our big three so called. However, it does not even have a secretary or clerk um, to assist the department with uh, filing reports, taking calls from residents. We find ourselves here filtering that stuff um, to the highway department. Um, so they, they desperately need administrative help and they need on the ground or on the roads help as well. So anyway, I've mentioned highway, but I, there are, there are multiple uh, needs. Um, and another one that, that has, has been addressed, at least on a temporary basis this year, is the temporary conservation agent. I think we've seen, and I know I've seen firsthand, uh, just in doing the parking lot project, how complex that commission's work really is. You know, when you're talking a, a forty six page abbreviated notice of intent, knowing that a commission of volunteers is trying to sort through that information is absolutely amazing and they deserve a lot of credit for, for doing that work. But they also need someone who knows wetlands protection laws a- and other things to try to help them along. So the, this, I'm just touching on the, on the surface here.
So, a- and I agree. I mean, there's, there's uh, um, there's something that you can make for every, every committee that's here, you know, um, a justification as to why we need insert here. Um, and besides the ranking, I think the big um, ticket item here is a joint force of us and Personnel to go to finance and say we need, you know, wink and blink and a nod that equal two hundred thousand dollars made up figure. Um, where are we getting it from? $200,000 made up figure. Where are we getting it from? And what are we gonna do?
More importantly, why do we need it, right? I mean, that needs to be part of it. We need to. And administratively, I can assist the board and the personnel committee with explaining the true on the ground, day to day needs that, that we're seeing here. Look, you heard from Victoria last week. And to discuss the growth in our senior population and that's continuing. So, you know, on, on my, on my end, I am, you know, currently looking at how, you know, could we build partnerships? Could we share resources? Could we look at other ways to keep things efficient? And mitigate the town's costs and still provide the services we need. But we also need to build. A case to the taxpayers of town and explain why, why the need exists. And, and how it's going to help, you know, sustain the services.
I don't know, to me personally, I don't think it's a hard sell to the town. I mean, look around, you hear people complaining about, oh, we need the courts fixed. Oh, you know, we need help for the seniors. Oh, here I've written all the notes and I just haven't posted them. So no one has any idea what a committee is doing because they're not up there.
But many of those same people will then turn around and tell us the taxes are too high and we have to lower it somewhere.
Agreed. So pick one, you know, you can have it right or you can have it right now. You can't have both.
Well, and, and I, and I, and I don't think it's an all or nothing thing. I mean, I think there's a little bit of both. I think it's a combination of where we think the greatest need is potentially adding some staffing or, or doing some rearrangements. But I also think it is finding things that maybe we shouldn't be in the business of anymore or, or cut back on that we can't do everything everybody wants us to do. With, with, without going to infinite money. You know, the, and, and we just, we, we might be generally a wealthy town, but we also have people in town who are struggling to pay their taxes and are struggling to keep things afloat and. Adding five and six and seven percent of the tax rate every year is going to eventually price a lot of them out. And so I'm always trying, because I, I agree that I, I think the Council of Aging is doing great things and could do some more incredible things and keep more people in their homes if they had more resources. I saw in, when I was in FinCom and they still even today at FinCom and other committees that. The amount of time people had to volunteer is going down. And so you don't have someone who can spend four or five hours writing the minutes and posting the minutes, you know? And, and although you could do some stuff with maybe some senior work off hours. I don't know how much you can count on senior work off hours to do things that are sort of, I wanna call them mission critical. Everything that, that the senior work offs are doing is very important to the town. But the, but, I mean, actually, but. Things don't crash and burn without some of those tasks getting done. There, there are definitely things that sort of preventing future crashing and burning and burning burnout of current staff, but.
And, and commit, and volunteers. We've got a, we've got a chair of a committee sitting in this webinar right now who is also the clerk.
So, you know, I don't know, Margaret, do you almost draw up an affinity, an affinity diagrams to see where there's overlapping to say, hey, if we hire one person, they can take care of five deeds?
Yeah, yeah, the, such as a recording secretary, such as a recording secretary, especially in the world of virtual meetings. Where that work might be able to be done remotely. So that is certainly one of those positions that could be shared between multiple boards and committees. In fact. A lot of other municipalities are seeing exactly what they're seeing, what we're seeing, and they're posting for recording secretary positions and, you know, people who they can, they can kind of. Recruit to, to take minutes remotely. And that might be a very viable option for some of the committees on this list.
I, I do think we need to prioritize. It's not going to go over very well. Going to town meeting and saying, you know, we've got five or six departments that need. Extra help. And so maybe it's a five year plan or more. Because it's just not, it's just not gonna be viable with the voters, I don't think. But I, I do think maybe we need to come up with what's most important. And. You know, and kind of cost it out and then depending on what that cost is, maybe you look at a second. Department. And, and I, I do think that maybe the departments need to be looked at first before committees and boards. Just my opinion.
For, for higher level, for higher level.
For additional staff, I guess.
Right. I, I, I agree with you, Chris, except maybe conservation, which I agree is sort of, we, we, as a town, I think. Underappreciated sort of how much extra conservation knowledge Walter brought and still brings to this day, but. Doesn't have, you know, 40 hours a week to put to, and we're not even looking at a conservation for it, but that, and these laws get increasingly more complicated. I don't know how any. I don't know how any business or homeowner who wants to do something knows all the state laws and rules and permits they need to do things.
Right. I do agree with you, Scott. I think that's true. I think we, because I think we don't have someone like that. I think we're losing out in some areas. Because we don't have that information, maybe within the board.
And I think conservation area is one of those areas that is more easily shared with other towns because there's not a lot of towns that need a 40 hour a week conservation agent. And there are people who would like to have some, some more full time stuff. And so where we can do some sharing, I, I think we can, we can look for some of those positions.
So maybe it's a matter of just. Even getting a highway superintendent on board and getting input from that person as to, you know, is this doable with four people or do we need to add to this? And maybe there is some, one person that could do. Like help for additional departments.
I don't think we've even fully resolved how much highway and facilities as one position or two. Or how to make, how to make the facilities department sort of have a critical mass where. Promotions and advancement are, are more easily attainable. I mean, I know the ideas have been batted around and, and. I don't think we've come to a conclusion. There's some great ideas that when you go into the details are great ideas, except for these two or three pain points and whether or not those pain points are worth it or not. I, I don't think we've gotten to a point yet.
So Christine, I mean, Sue and Claire, you've been kind enough to let the board kind of blather on a little bit. Are there any comments? Because it's like, you know, you know, we just go back and forth and stuff, but you know, and I wanna hear from Claire and Sue.
I would just suggest, Claire, if you could just call your meeting to order.
Because there's two of you, yep.
I'm calling the Personnel Committee to order. Hi, everyone. I think one of our biggest concerns was the highway department because right now we have two, two people that can drive trucks. And so when it comes time for snow removal, we have two people. And that's it, that can drive the big trucks. And it's a little concerning to us and I know we do have some positions posted in terms of seasonal plow drivers and everything. And I think. Margaret, I think you had noted to us that you thought that somebody was gonna come back this year that was a seasonal plow driver. Two people, okay, thank you. Which is really important and, and I do understand. That our residents wanna be plowed out and they wanna have our roads plowed and, and I think that's a little concerning to us. I, I think we saw the need. And when we, we were doing some research on this and talking about it at our meeting, there was some talk about how our. Staffing within the department itself has not changed since 2002. And, and, and that. That in, in, and of itself is. Something that we need to look at because our town has certainly changed since 2002. And we want to be able to keep the good people and retain them that we have, but at the same time. Get some new people in. Sue? Any thoughts?
I can unmute. There I am. I'm just going to reiterate that highway is a high priority. And I think in a way we can't look at it financially. I know we have to because that's what the voters care about. But this is also part of our public safety. You know, we can have the greatest fire and the greatest police and they can't get there because those roads aren't plowed or the trees aren't moved. And I think that's something we all need to consider. And even if it is that we have to. Try to hire someone as soon as we can. I think that's a priority in that department. I think there are others that are. High up, but. I definitely put highway first.
Because these positions have been unsealed or, or a bit, are we building up a surplus on the highway budget at the moment?
Yes. For the current year. For the current year.
So Margaret. And anybody else? So let's say that we pick. Free, making it up, that we wanna really zoom in on right now. What would you see would be next steps? So let's say that, you know, everyone seems to like lean on highway and, and Council on Aging.
Okay, yeah, we do need to keep, we do need to keep our eyes on, on these high priorities. Immediately, we need to fill vacant positions. We have several vacant positions, one more added today. And we need to start, we need to fill these. And so I've, I've laid out, well, I'll talk about it in my TA report. I'll just briefly touch on it. With scheduled interviews, but we need to start with that. We need to at least try to get. The departments as close to their normal staffing levels. As, you know, as, as we can before, before we move on it. But if you're looking, if you're, if you're talking about funding in the current year. For a position that's going to present a recurring cost to the town. That would have to be made very, very clear. We talked earlier about using ARPA funds for some of this stuff. I, you know, I. Normally would never recommend using a finite funding source for recurring expenses if the board and. You know, if the board deems this additional staffing to be. A, a high priority for the current fiscal year, we'd need to send that, we'd need to make the message. Extremely clear to, you know, to the town. That we are plugging the hole with existing funds this year, but expect them to appear on the budget next year. And I'm not, I, I, I'm not, I, I, I do see day to day, I see the need in the highway department as well. And, and it's something that we need to tackle. As the default Personnel Director, I need, I need to fill some positions right now. That's what I need to do right now.
I mean, I, I don't think the, this hiring environment is going to change soon. I mean, I think it is, we need to think about how we operate chronically under staff. And one way to potentially do that is we're going to have vacancies on an ongoing basis. And that might allow us to think that, I'm giving this as an example, but that full staff of the highway is, is six. Knowing that on a regular basis, one of them is going to be empty anyway. And so that, that you're still staying within the budget or staying near the budget, even though you have six positions because one of them is chronically vacant.
Well, it's not, that's not been the case over the years. I think it's just sort of a new thing.
No, but I, but, but it's also that the, the generation of workers today aren't thinking they're taking a job and staying there their whole lives. They're, they're, they are from, from three months into their job or six months of their job, looking for what the next thing is.
That could be.
And so I think that, I think the turnover is going to be, you know, it is, is a current, this is the way the world works sort of environment. And that we should be thinking about both, not only handle the fulfilling, but how do we have the, because we don't have the infrastructure in town to constantly be hiring. We do not have someone to receive the resumes as they come in. We don't have somebody to do the posting. We don't have people to do the, the sorting through the resumes to get the six people. That, that, that Margaret doesn't have a time in her, in her job to be doing, you know, five and six and seven interviews a day for a dozen different positions. And so this is not only thinking about how do we fill the, sorry, I have something in my eye that is bugging me beyond, if I had contacts, I'd swear that a contact that slipped, but. That, that we have to find a way to make sure we have the infrastructure to, to continually be continually hiring. You know, my, my office has 250 openings right now. And, and we, we have tripled the amount of recruiters we have and we've increased the amount of money we're putting into advertising. And that helps some of the positions, but you know, also some of the businesses are gonna have to be helped by just raising the salary or changing what it does. And see if you can rearrange responsibilities to make some jobs more appealing and exciting and interesting or. Or show that there's advancement potentials. Same CDLs that we're looking for to drive the snow trucks are the same, what, two to 3,000 openings they have for school bus drivers around the state? You know, we're, we're in that same pool and, and truck drivers too.
Right. Yes, and we don't have the luxury of hiring National Guard or recruiting National Guard to come and drive our highway trucks.
Well, don't, don't get me started on that path, but. I mean, I know we just spent a lot of time and energy and, and I thought it was an incredible exercise sort of reevaluating the, the pay structure and, 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 and the steps, the other stuff. And sadly, COVID could have made chunks of that not as valuable anymore because the, the pay rates are, have changed out there in some of these that. We're redefining as a society, who is an essential worker. You know, that, that people don't want to work $3.50 or $4, whatever the minimum wage is for waiters and waitresses these days. Because they can earn 15 to 18 bucks an hour in an Amazon warehouse and get, you know, benefits. And we have to think about how we compete with those employees and.
We're having, yeah, we're seeing, and we're not alone in this either, that we are having an extremely difficult time competing in the market, municipalities in general. So very difficult time, especially with highway. You know, we've just seen some key municipal positions where. There's this, you know, there's a huge gap now, so.
All right, so Margaret, what are you looking for, for next steps? I mean, I think, I think it's safe to say that all of us on the screen are in agreement that this needs to be done. So what is?
So. So I noted in one of my prior emails that the list here is not necessarily in priority order, nor is it all inclusive. And so we absolutely need to identify priorities. Personnel Committee has made it clear what their priorities are. What their priority is, you know, which department to hone in on. And I don't disagree. I, I think that that is, it's absolutely imperative to, to provide some support. With Council on Aging, I also think that that needs to be prioritized. You know, how we address. Some of these vacancies through, you know, possible partnerships with other municipalities. That's something that I need to continue working on. I am working on it and I need to continue working on it. Because that could alleviate the cost burden to the town and still provide some, you know, critical staffing capacity we need. Conservation Commission, the Need for Conservation Agent is not going away. It's not going away and every single municipality. That's another, that's another key position that's being posted by so many municipalities. We've posted the temporary conservation agent and have, have had a total of two resumes come in so far, two. As of earlier today, it was one, so.
That's twice the number it was last time you told us, so.
A hundred percent, yeah, the number of applicants has gone up a hundred percent. So, no, I, I, I wish it was, I, I wish it was a flurry of applicants and I do hope, you know, that with changes in, in COVID relief. For, you know, residents, for citizens of the country, that there might be a change or a shift. In a pool of applicants or an increase in, in a pool, in the pool of applicants that we potentially see. It's not there yet, but my hope. So anyway. Priorities. I completely agree with Chris and I think the board and Personnel has discussed this before. This must be phased. This cannot happen in one year. This does have to be a multi-year plan. And we have to prioritize it. So we need to determine the top needs, you know. We've all discussed a few of those critical needs tonight. Those are ones that I would plan on focusing on. And, and then others also, we do have needs elsewhere. Make no mistake, the, and I know COVID has exacerbated this a lot. With reporting requirements and everything, but we have no webmaster. We've got no webmaster. Mary has done, Mary has made, you know, concerted effort to try to. You know, update our, our website, but we have no webmaster at this, at this moment. Nor do any of us have the capacity to. Spend time on the web updating it. So it's, it's not something that's. That we can spend an awful lot of time. that we can spend an awful lot of time on. It might be a very fractional position, but it's something we need to think about. We're also losing our data systems coordinator slash police chief. Now, we have an IT contractor who does all kinds of things for us on the outside, sets up our computers and, and, you know, checks, does a server health checks and does all this other stuff. But on the day to day, when you, when someone has a little computer issue, it's been the police chief who has responded as data systems coordinator. We're not going to have that in a new police chief either. So, and I know that I am a code data systems coordinator, but I am not a technologically savvy data systems coordinator. You know, I can, I can help with tiny little things and I know that I would have the authority to monitor activity, but data systems? Shut off your computer and try to turn it on again and see if that one.
Wapping on the side.
That works a lot more than you think it does.
We always go to that one first. So anyway, I'm, I'm I'm kind of on a, I'm kind of on a roll here, but I think that I get the message. We need to prioritize. We need to phase this.
I, I think also for some small specialty things is contracting it out, that it's not an employee of the town. It's a contract with a larger firm that we're, we're, we're a piece of.
Yeah.
There could be several of those like that, like webmaster and data systems are good uses of those. I, I, I've not got down the path, but you know, are there companies that, that take care of highway? You know, is, is that something that is contractable out to a bigger firm? The level of service might not be as good.
Likely to be contracted out a webmaster.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Highway, highway highly unlikely given the market right now, just because everything, everything is so strange. We can't compete, you know, with, with union jobs, you know, major construction jobs in markets. So you know, maybe sometime in the future that would be possible. But, but it's, it's a good thought and especially for the fractional position, Scott, you know, just as you noted, you know, if we only need a couple of hours a week from somebody, why not look at a contract?
So are you looking for us, Margaret, to take however many are in this list and give us, give you our thoughts as to, or are we going to stick with highway, council on aging, conservation with those top three?
I, I don't have the list in front of me. So you know, I was going to ask, I don't have it in front of me. So I was going to ask if there was another recommendation as far as highway, would it be council on aging, Margaret?
Council on aging definitely, definitely needs to be addressed.
Is there another one besides that? I don't.
Conservation, conservation agent.
Okay. Well, those three are the ones that I would say are my top three.
And I just want to note that as part of the budget process, I have discussed this with department heads. I don't want to eliminate, you know, there are other departments here that have needs as well, and I don't want to just stick to this top of the list thing. You know, assuming that they're priorities, but there are other departments who have expressed need for additional staff hours. For example, accounting, accounting assistant. Now that did, I don't know how many, you know, how many folks are aware that our, that our accounting, accounting clerk actually does backup work for the energy committee and is tracking green communities. So when we establish these, you know, when we put these new initiatives in place, there's administrative work that has to happen and she has assumed that. I also want to give her a big shout out because she has also assumed inputting data into our COVID spreadsheets and for the reports that I have to submit on a quarterly basis. So a shout out to her. But anyway, I really am on a roll. I am sorry. Fire and EMS, additional deputy hours. Of course, the ALS, you know, eventual paramedic level service potentially. So there's a lot.
The number of senior workoff hours or, or number of people we can hire, that is capped?
No.
Like, no, it's not.
No.
So if there are more people, there are more people who qualified who wanted to quote, work for the town for, I, I get that they get the maximum amount of $1,500, but they could put in hours that ultimately lower their tax bill, their personal tax bill, not the tax bill, that, that some of these positions I think could, so this could at least could be helped in the short term and short term could end up being three or four years that we get sort of a better place helping them out.
Senior tax workoff could be used in some places. You know, with, with recording secretary, for example, I mean, you're not, you can't use senior tax workoff for a, you know, a, a conservation agent, for example, but you know, with some of these, with some of these, you know, staffing assistant positions, it's, they potentially could help, yes.
Margaret, do we know, so I'm just going to pick on Rec. Do we know why they made the list? Is it, do they fall under the?
They made the list for the same reason that the other committees made the list. They have no one, you know, they have no one assisting them. Well, they are also a funded department, which, you know, adds a bit of complication there because they're also responsible for their financial reporting and things like that. And this is all being done by, by volunteers as well. So they not only have the recording secretary need, but they also have, you know, some additional needs as far as managing, you know, they're, they're doing administrative stuff.
In addition to highway council on aging and the conservation commi- commission spot, could we throw in a recording secretary? Because that could, you know, again, making it up, yeah, I'm making it up, totally making it up. You know, you give that person 24 hours a week or something. Now they can go to the, you know, what's every committee meet? Once a week, every other week? I mean, they may be able to pick off four or five of these on the, you know, on the list. So if that's their only need is, is the recording.
Mm hmm. So, yeah, the, that, I, I'm, you know, we can, we can certainly look at that. And to Scott's point from before, contracting, there are some municipalities that have contracted out recording, you know, minutes, taking minutes services. So I, I don't know if that's a viable option, but I could certainly look into it.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, a few years ago, we had someone from one of the committees come forward and want to put in their budget a recording secretary. And I believe we told them no.
No.
Because no other committee has a paid recording secretary. And so I think if that's, that might be like a, a discussion that we should have. I think being a recording secretary of a committee is not quite as difficult to some of the other things like the, you know, that the conservation commission is looking for. That, that has some kind of, you have to have some kind of background. And I suppose you do need a background in being able to take minutes, I suppose, but you know, I, I would rather have a little longer discussion on that. If there's some, I guess if there was HR needs or something that requires more of a, a background that, you know, general people that are volunteering would not have. But, but pretty much every committee I think could take their own minutes. I mean, we could probably even take our own too. But we've got Mary.
I mean, they, they could, but also if you think at it too, as either we're Scott or Margaret that said, you know, the number of volunteer hours that have come down, because I know that there's, you know, a couple of friends on different committees, they're like, yeah, I'm done after this one because I'm sick and tired of taking the notes. So it's almost like if you could take that small portion of the annoyance of, I'm not taking notes. And then this way we're hearing the committees, you know, that have come forth to help us. It's almost, all right, well, here we'll give you some hands. Maybe that will turn somebody's head to say, oh, you know what? Okay, I'm in. You know, that might increase volunteer time. You don't know. Well, exactly. You don't know.
Plus there, you know, there is a difference in, in the committees listed even here, there's a big difference between the frequency of some committee meetings and the frequency of others. So that has to be accounted for in this priority listing.
Yes. I mean, I think it should be on the list. I guess. I just don't think it's a high priority for me. I think for committees anyway.
Yeah. I mean, and I did, and I went through that list. And there are some that don't have defined meetings. You know, and there are like personnel, just because they're here, you know, they meet twice. Capital planning as needed, they're going to start to ramp up. Cemetery is once a month, planning is twice. Conservation is twice, historical is once, you know, finance is going to start to ramp up. They're going to go Wednesdays. So.
Well, I mean, if you were going to get, how do you do it? You gets, get a recording secretary for some? One? I mean, all?
Well, that's what I'm saying is that if you allot enough hours and can figure out the, the turn on the meetings, then maybe if they're again, 24 hours and there's six meetings or whatever, six groups that you could spread, you could spread this out and they could tackle all of them.
And, and is some, if someone's getting paid over 20 hours, do they get health insurance too?
I don't know. If it was an employee, yes.
Yeah. I mean, so that's all part of it, you know, it's, it's not, we're not going to solve this tonight, but I think we need to, you know, just not lock ourselves into this, but you know, start to look here and see what else we could do.
Well, maybe, I mean.
Whoops. You also have a majority of committees that all meet the same night, Wednesday nights.
Yeah, Wednesday.
So you're looking at least three to four boards that do Wednesday nights.
Well, and the nice thing.
That's the night that I committee meeting hop. I, I meeting hop that night.
You know, and that's the nice thing. If these meetings are recorded like ours and someone doesn't have to literally run up and down the hall to go to the meetings, they could play these back, you know, and take minutes from that.
I think, I wonder if, I'll talk to Victoria tomorrow to see if we could kind of do something in the powder house news about senior tax workoff and recording secretaries. I wonder if in the next powder house news, we could actually see if we could recruit any seniors who have, you know, secretarial administrative background who might be interested in doing this.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. All right, Margaret, what do you need from us?
Well, a timeline.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to have, we need to have a lot of this. We need to have a lot of this in place at the start of the budget process, right around the corner. You know, so I, I do think that I feel that I'm fairly clear on priorities and, and can, you know, can work to, to help defend some of these. So I I can just continue to report back to the board and personnel committee when I meet with personnel committee as to how we're moving along here. And, oh, I just wanted, I just wanted to note too, I'm sorry, I kind of got off track before. As part of the budget process, I've instructed department heads this year. In prior years, I asked them or last year, anyway, maybe the year before, I asked them to summarize the need for additional staffing levels in their department. What I'm going to be asking this year, and I've, I've informed them of this, I want to know, you know, we want, I want all the details behind, behind the need. I want to know staffing levels, you know, how they've increased. I want to know what other regulatory impacts they've seen and, you know, and other, and other reasons that the need exists. And that's going to be part of the budget process. So I can start this based on the priorities that have been discussed tonight. But I, I, it's not, I, we need to get into the budget process and see, you know, and see what evolves from that justification.
I wouldn't mind adding a little bit to that. If it's not too much burden is, where do they think they're spending time and money on things that are not adding value to the town? Because I think one of this is, we keep talking about, you know, the, the added regulatory burdens and the unfunded mandates and just things getting more complicated. Are there places we can make things a little bit simpler? Maybe not initially because maybe there's a state law that says we have to do X and X adds nothing to our town that we can talk to our legislators, like, you know, regulatory simplification, if you could do X, this could save us some real money in our town.
Yep. And, and there are, you know, we do have some heavily regu- regulated departments, but that's a, that's a very good point. To see if there's anything else out there would also help us identify more of those unfunded mandates that I really can't stand. So.
Right. I don't need every underfunded. I think there are, where are things? Because even like the, the police training, that's an unfunded mandate, but I can see where that's adding value to the town now. Where we go with the money and whether or not the state should pay for something, it could be a debate, but that is what I, I find in my work, there are sometimes, you know, rules and regulations that are written 20 or 30 years ago that make no sense anymore. Though, but we're still doing it. That if we can help find some of those that help just not only our town, but other towns, I think that would be great. And I don't think we're talking about millions of dollars out there, but every little thing sort of adds up, just like all the little things that make things more complicated have added up to some unsustainable stuff in our own town.
So Margaret, do we want to drop this on an agenda of three weeks from now for updates?
I can continue, I, I can continue to provide updates. You know, unless there's something specific that you want from me in three weeks, I'm happy to continue providing updates.
Do we need to invite her? Go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, I just appreciate when, when there's a time when we all need to show some support for this list or the things that we decide we need that to let us know ahead of time so that we can plan to be at the finance committee meeting or any other meeting.
That would be extremely, that would be extremely helpful.
Okay. Do we need, do you foresee the need for another joint meeting between us and the most awesome personnel department? In the, in the near future?
Well, may, maybe as the budget process begins in order to discuss, you know, in order to discuss these, these staffing needs in a little more detail.
Okay. All right.
I think that would be something that the chair could discuss with the, at agenda setting.
We can discuss it at agenda setting.
Yeah. And I get, and I'm going to assign action items, action items. There you go. Okay. All right. Well, this has been great. And I mean, Claire and Sue, you know, you're a part of our unsung heroes too in town. So you know, as a former personnel committee, you know, Claire, I might have stretched the truth on how much time you were really going to put into this, but you know, I appreciate everything that you guys do to keep us running tip top. So, you know.
And they are working. They are working, moving through those policies.
We just want to make sure that we're there to also support, support Margaret because I know Margaret's got a lot on her plate right now. And I just want to make sure we're here to help her as much as we can as well.
Thank you. Let's get some of these vacancies filled with some qualified, qualified people.
Awesome. All right. I think we're good to go. Any last comments, Susan, Claire? Nope. See you to know. All right. Thank you so much. Have a lovely night. All right. Now, Margaret, you've been teasing us all night with your TA report, so.
My, my six points, my six points of light. All right. So the first one tonight, I'm just going to, very, very quick COVID update. Berlin's vaccination rate stands at 74% as of the end of last week. And nine new cases in addition to the ones previously reported were reported last week. Just a quick update on the homes at Highland Ridge conservation restriction. There has been a significant amount of back and forth. Legal reviews on both sides, site visits, and it appears that we're getting closer to a resolution. So the board's timeline that was set back in July, the three months. My hope is that we will be around that. That timeline I think would be Mary, I think Mary said October 12th would be the three month period from that July 12th meeting. Hiring process updates. I sent an email earlier today. Let me just quickly pull that up. I expect to do, we expect to do interviews for highway full-time laborer driver. We have received, well, as of earlier today, we, we had received 23 resumes on indeed.com. Thank goodness for indeed.com. And I'm working with Jim and Fred right now to narrow the field to a maximum of six candidates for interviews. And if needed, additional interviews will be conducted. Public safety administrative assistant, both chiefs have gone through the 86 applications received, mostly on indeed.com. And we are working to narrow that field to a maximum of six for interviews. And I expect the interviews to be done later this week or early next week, just like the highway laborer ones. Temporary conservation agent. Mary has, thank you, Mary, for contacting this, this candidate, trying to set up an interview with the candidate whose application we had received earlier today. We got one, we got one later in the day today. Hopefully we'll be able to do, I'd be able to do an interview with the ConCon Chair Carolyn McDonald on Friday of this, for this candidate. No applications have been submitted for the highway winter drivers in addition, other than those, we, we haven't gotten applications. Well, we did get an application from the existing drivers, but we have the two part-time drivers that are already on the winter roster. So as you know, I need to submit my notice of intent to appoint these positions. The board can sit on that, that notice of intent for up to 14 days for approval or disapproval, or you could approve or disapprove on the spot. So as soon as we have, as soon as I have a top candidate to present to you. as soon as I have a top candidate to present to you, I'm going to give you that notice of intent to appoint and ask, um, that the board take action on that. So that will be coming. Yeah, probably won't be coming on Monday unless, um, unless we finish up interviews by Friday of this week. If not, it would be October fourth. The other thing that I have tonight is, um, I just wanted to bring up the idea of entertainment licensing. So, as you know, we're continuing to receive, uh, concerns, uh, from Nineteen Carter, but but overall, noise complaints have increased a bit over the past several months, um, year and, um, not exactly sure, well, I mean, I think we've, we've heard what's, what's spurring some of it. Um, but there have been noise complaints from various areas of town, in any case. Um, this is, this is, um, idea only pertains to entertainment licensing. So I do believe, um, after having met with, with residents and representatives of Nineteen Carter, that residents should be allowed the opportunity um, for peace and enjoyment on their own properties. And, um, I I do think there's a need to address, um, the continued entertainment, um, performances, the, you know, musical performances and things like that, um, the frequency of them, the ampli- amplification of the sound, um, and vehicle and pedestrian, uh, traffic issues at, at some of these events. So, um, you know, I had initially thought about the possibility of a noise bylaw and, but I quickly recognized that not only would that be extremely complex, and you'd have to get into how to, how to measure noise. Who's going to measure the noise, who's going to enforce the bylaw? And and a- any bylaw that's presented to the town would be contentious in some way, because not everyone's needs are the same. So, rather than that, I thought that the board's adoption of an entertainment license policy and procedure uh, might help, um, create reasonable regulations, um, that would require compliance. So I just wanted to present this to the board as an idea tonight, um, with no further discussion, just to kind of get a sense of whether the board would like us to pursue, uh, drafting, uh, such policies and procedures.
I don't have problems with it, I I worry about where it overlaps between our existing event uh, licenses for people who do like to the road races and the one-day alcohol permits and the food truck licenses. And, and again, every form we have, every form we have and every permit we need requires administrative burden, and we just talked about administrative burden over the town as well, and so, I I I, I agree that people should be able to enjoy their property. I also agree that people should be able to use their property, um, and want to find a balance that, uh, that that respects both of those the best we can.
Yeah, yeah, I think finding a balance is, is absolutely critical.
Really, yet you bring up a good point, though, administratively. You know, if it was a bylaw of some kind, I don't think, would it be as much of an administrative drain?
Maybe not administratively, but enforcement-wise and it's measuring noise, I mean, we could certainly look into it, I gave the board a couple of examples on both sides of the extreme. One, very, very long, complex noise bylaw, and one that was very, very brief, um. The, yeah, again, the issue is going to be, um, decibel levels and measuring noise, and how is it measured under OSHA standards? And who's going to do it?
Yeah, I'm really bummed by the spring peepers that are eighty-two decibels in my backyard, get resprayed, but, uh, I don't think they're covered by this, so.
Right. They're not going to stop. So, all right, I just, I I just wanted a, a sense, I I, I don't, I don't.
Think it's a bad idea, I think, I think it is, it it may help out in some way. Um, I really do, so, um, I, I would be interested in seeing a draft of some kind.
Okay, all right. Um, uh, I've, you know, I've asked Mary to work with me, um, on this, and you bring up such a good point with overlap with other applications, where we have special event applications on town properties, how is it going to, you know, how is it all going to mesh? So we, we will need to sort that out, so within the next, within the next two weeks, I hope to have a, a, you know, a draft for reasonable, um, and fair regulations to the board for consideration. Uh, the next thing, I I'm sorry, it's kind of just on a, very talkative. The, um, the Berlin Boylston Regional School District, um, has sent us notice of upcoming negotiations with the Berlin Boylston Educators Association. By default, I am, um, I am supposed to be, uh, the negotiator. The law says if there is no town administrator, it is the select board chair of the designated, so, um, I guess, um, you know, it appears that I'm it, and, um, I just, I wanted to share that information with you, and I plan on going to the meeting that they're having on October twenty-fifth, um, for the, uh, to establish the, the team of negotiators, uh, for the town, Townsend District. Last Wednesday's Finance Committee meeting was canceled, so they haven't re- uh, yet reviewed or discussed the draft budget letter, uh, for Berlin Boylston Regional School District that the board reviewed last week. FinCon is scheduled to meet on October sixth, so, um, um, I hope that they, um, they review it and provide comments then. Uh, select board policies in general. Um, so since July of twenty nineteen, the board has adopted more than thirty policies. Um, and so at this point, it's time to, Mary has done a great job putting them all into a, a drive. Um, but I think, you know, at some point here, we're going to need to organize them into some sort of manual that's categorized. You know, licensing here, you know, personnel here, and, um, and so, um, I think that's something that we're going to have to work on. Because as the board adopts policies, and I am very policy-driven, um, you know, as far as recommendations, um, we're, we're going to have to, um, start organizing these. So just a couple of other things, Community Preservation Act Committee has received three pre-applications for CPA projects, one from Historical, one from CONCON, and one from Recreation. And to date, only one capital request has been received, and that is from Conservation Commission. I was notified, though, last week by the fire chief, um, that the old ambulance is having some mechanical issues. Um, I don't have any more details on that at this point, uh, but there may be some urgency, um, in, uh, in, in a capital request there as well. Loader is repaired and back at the highway barn, and that's all I have today.
And Margaret, can I just ask you, who is Boylston having, uh, represent Boylston?
It should be their ta- it should be their town administrator, I believe, um, I can talk with.
Administrator for a long time, and it's always been one of the board members, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That's interesting, I'll talk to Susan, Susan sent the letter, so I'll give her a call and ask, um, and I've read the statute and it seems clear, but, um, I will talk with Susan and get her thoughts on that, okay?
And if you, I think I sent you an email just to let you know that if you needed any help with any of the
Oh.
The, the interviewing or hiring or, I mean, as far as being another feedback.
I appreciate that, and I may take you up on it, we'll see how.
Okay.
We'll see, this is going to be kind of a tight little period of time of doing all these, so.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, um, so Margaret, we mentioned that Finance did not meet last night, uh, hello, last week.
Yeah.
Uh, for the draft budget to the Boylston Berlin Regional School District, so do you want to skip that over and we'll put it on next week's agenda?
Yes, please, oh, well, no, not, well, not next, next week either, because, uh, FinCon's not meeting until October sixth.
Okay, so, the meeting after that.
It would be your October.
Oh, the thirteen, twelve?
Twelfth meeting.
Okay. All right, um, so next up, have we received any, uh, update on the determination from the Mabel Felton Marble Scholar?
No, Judy, um, Judy responded to Mary. Judy responded to Mary and was going to run it by Sylvia, um, but we have not heard back yet.
All right.
I don't think, Mary, is that right?
Um, Sylvia answered by mail over the weekend, Judy hasn't answered, even though she emails us. So I took what Sylvia wrote by US Mail, and I copied Judith, and I asked her if she would confirm if she agrees with Sylvia. So.
Okay, okay, so we're just, so that's held till next week, right?
Yeah, all right, I'll put on the schedule, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
All right, and then up, uh, next is the Smithsonian on Main Street program update. So I sent, um, you all the rather lengthy but extremely informative input from everybody that Margaret and I met with, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and was able to take multiple hours yesterday afternoon and pare it down into the Word Doc, um, that you have on what our application will look like. So Margaret gave me a thumbs up, uh, Trish Settles gave me a thumbs up. Um, up in my email tonight just popped a letter of recommendation from CMRPC, so that will go with the uh, application before Friday, so just wondering, comments, thoughts, you know, ready to go? What do you think? The hard work is yet to be started yet, this is the easy part, putting the application together, yeah.
I, I think if we get accepted, I I will put energy into trying to beat bushes to get volunteers and energy behind it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
And I've said that on a recorded meeting, so.
Yes, you have.
No, and I mean, if you read through some of the emails too, from the folks that gave input, they, I got the feeling that they don't think it will be a hard sell to the town either, um, to put out there, as long as we can say we need X amount to do on this day at this time. Uh, and I think it's a great opportunity again, and I put it in the application for those kids on National Honor Society, you know, as part of their resume for colleges, you know, that they come forth and help as well. Um, and again, you drive that information down into the younger kids in, you know, in our town, so you don't have all us old folk with just the knowledge. It starts to go down generational level, so I will submit that, uh, by Friday, and then we sit and wait. Um, Margaret, do you know offhand when the determination will be made by? I went to look through and I couldn't find it. When we'll hear by?
Uh.
I'll look.
Can't think of it off the top of my head. It's there, it's there somewhere.
It's in there somewhere, all right, um, so then up next is the uh, warrant, the special town meeting review warrant article proposals warrant closes next Monday at five thirty PM.
We've received, no, we have received no additional article proposals, I know I have not put them in, in warrant article form yet, the ones that I have on the list, and I, I will work on that. But, um, uh, we've no, we've received nothing, uh, new since the last one I plugged in.
Right, so, some of those, Margaret, are in, I mean, I know you haven't typed it, but are close to being done, because some of those are bylaw changes. And so I just want to make sure someone is writing them to
Yeah.
Put them in, because the meeting is, you know, it's six, seven weeks away, and if there are bylaw changes, we know that we need to start getting those out to people. And eventually, uh, uh, someone at least having public hearings and talking about them.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Margaret, I'll carry that over to next week's agenda as well.
Okay.
So then up for new business is the draft fraud prevention policy updates.
Yeah, so this is a very, very preliminary introduction to the board now. Um, I, I, I've noted that, um, the fraud prevention policy, uh, was written back in twenty eleven or was, it was approved back in twenty eleven, and there have been no revisions on it, and so there have been significant changes since, in the past ten years. And, um, so what I've done is I've presented a red line to the board, and it is actually, this type of thing is, is very exciting, because this is a key component of the town's overall financial management policies, and to have this done would be an accomplishment. So what I've done is I've, I've prepared a red line. Um, Sandy, the HR, the HR consultant that we used, um, provided some language for fraud policy as an appendix in the back of the, um, the employee, uh, manual. And so I've taken some of her language, which is more relevant today than it was ten years ago, and I've replaced some of the language in the policy that was written uh, ten years ago, it was a well-written policy, uh, but there have just been updates over the past ten years. So I just asked that the board review the red lines, I've given you the red line copy, a clean draft, and the current policy. Uh, if you could just review those, um, I've also notified the Personnel Committee, um, that we're working on this, and hopefully that's going to alleviate some of their work in trying to, um, in trying to make recommendations on appendices.
All right, next week, you want, um, some comments to you by next week for?
Well, comments to me by next week, but it's a long policy, so I would understand if it takes a couple of weeks, and this is, and I'm just introducing it to you tonight, so.
Okay, all right, well, we'll check in next week and see what you have for comments.
And, and it's mostly a search and repl- I mean, it's mostly a replace, I mean, you've kept seventy-five words of a five-page document or so.
Yeah, 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 there's a, yeah, I've just really replaced some of the old language with the new language and, and made sure that who the policy is applicable to, uh, to is very, very clear. That would be any and all employees and representatives of the town in any way, shape, or form, so.
Then, how did this policy get picked?
I have had this sitting on my desk, Scott, since twenty nineteen, waiting to update it, so it's just been a long, a long-awaited policy update, that's all.
So the secret is, Margaret, is that get you out of the office, and then we take all the paperwork on your desk, and we run down the hall and we hide it, so then we can't.
So I don't, yeah, so I don't.
We don't find it.
No, this is just, yeah, this is one step, I mean, I have wanted to do overall financial management policies for a long time. Mary had actually found a couple of other old ones, she found an old investment policy and, um, and, and things like that. But I'd love to update as part of the town's overall financial management policies. Just doing this one, doing this one step, in my opinion, would be progress.
Yes.
All right, uh, so we are now down to board's questions, comments, liaison updates, go.
I'm, I'm good.
All right, uh, I will go quickly, um, I was approached by, uh, resident in town. Uh, she wants to show her thanks to Fire Police EMS Highway by purchasing signs and then having people come get them and just put them on their lawn. Um, she doesn't want them on town property, uh, she doesn't want them on church property, so she said before she went out and bought them, she wanted to know if we had any issue with them. And I would tell them I would bring, uh, this to the board tonight and text her as soon as we're done with a yea or nay.
What does the town's signed bylaw say? I want to make sure that she doesn't buy them, and then we discover that someone, someone doesn't like them, and then complains about and there's officially a town bylaw that forces them all to come down, because that would make me sad.
I know, you know what, Scott, I think it's probably along the idea of the one that a resident donated last year and put it on the church lawn that we got permission, that just says basically like, thank you, and there's, you know.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
How big is it? How, the, our sign, our zoning bylaw on signs is very extensive, so how big is the sign, what are the dimensions?
She didn't say, I think she.
Okay, I would suggest, Peg, I, um, I would suggest that she, uh, contact Richard. Um, and I'm going to give you, I'm going to send you his number, because this is something that should be run by him first.
Anybody else besides Richard?
He's really the zoning enforcement officer and could speak to it.
And he's recently had to look at the signing, the sign rule for a variety of different things, and so because he's looked at them recently, it's probably not going to take a lot of work on his part to, to say, if you do it by this dimension, by this dimension, you know, this far back from the road will all be fine, and then when she buys them, they'll be, uh, they'll, they will, it won't be a problem.
Okay, all right, I'll reach out to her tonight.
Because we know that no good deed goes unpunished, and so it'll be a great sign, and if it's two inches too long, someone's going to complain, and we're going to be forced to take it out because it's two inches too long, even though we love it.
Okay, all right, understood, um, all right.
Peg, I'll get you, I'll get you his number so she can call him directly.
Thank you, appreciate it, uh, so all the ADA grants, Margaret, did you get the last notification for the uh, active listening one for twenty-five hundred, you gave me the other three.
Oh.
If you didn't, that's fine.
Okay, I saw a couple of things go back and forth today, I just haven't caught it.
Then that's fine, more than like, Margaret, if you got the other ones and that went, went through, so all those ADA grants are in, uh, over eighty thousand dollars, and I included the thirty-five thousand for refurbishing of the gazebo itself common, so that may help. Some of those.
Let's combine our grant funding to get that all done, now that'd be nice.
Yeah, so, yeah, wouldn't that be nice, uh, all right, Smithsonian done, um, uh, we have training coming up on Thursday, I saw the email go by. Question for you, uh, Margaret, Rec is looking to possibly start booking some events. Um, I told them to look at the Town Hall, uh, eighteen seventy.
Oh, yeah, I've been in touch with Julie, I've been in touch with Julie about that, it's, it's not events, though, it's actual recreation programs.
Yeah, um, she asked about, or I asked about Legion Hall. I remember when Historical wanted to put some stuff there over on Lincoln Strait, the building that Chris has never found or gone to. Uh, do we?
I have the key, I got the key, I got the key. Let me know when you're going.
That's right.
I was gonna say, select board meeting at, at Legion Hall would be great.
Hey, I used to have Girl Scouts there, um, Girl Scouts and Brownies, is that it, so that's a town building that we can use?
Well, that I don't know, because, uh, uh, I've, I understand from Roger Bradley that the Legion is still using it. Um, what I wanted to do, because I've never gone into the building myself, um, I kind of wanted to go in and take a look around and see, you know, if it was, if it was something that we could utilize for some of our needs.
Because didn't Highway patch the hole in the floor? I think that was a major concern.
I think they had at one point. I think they had at one point.
All right, that's all I got. All right, so, having done that, uh, no need for executive session. I will take a motion to adjourn, so I can go make a, a journey around this, when we'll make a cup of tea.
I move that we adjourn, so Peg can make a cup of tea.
I want to know what kind of tea.
I'm not telling.
I'm just gonna go home, I'm just gonna go home and have some supper.
There you go.
Good night.
All right, motion, Chris, you good second?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, yes, okay, yeah, 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 all right, we're out, thank you.